Ladies and gents, I make it six thirty one now, my clock is a little bit slow. Let's begin our extraordinary meeting on today, Friday the twentieth of June. So agenda item number one, we have apologies for reasons for absence. I have received apologies for all those not here today. So I've got E Tempest, Paul Lansley and Anna Duffway for offering their respective reasons. Come on, we have a... Would anyone like to pose that we accept the apologies?
Yes.
E Tempest.
Yes.
Will be anyone to second? Thank you, Councilor Otter. All in favour of acceptance of your apologies and absences, that's unanimous, thank you. Are you happy with this meeting? No, thank you. Item number two, declarations of any interests and financial interests applications for dispensation. Any in the room for today? No, tonight. Item number three, declarations from the public. Any of you like to hop on up to the hallway? Please, how cool.
I would, well, can I just, can I say the other chair, please, I don't know whether to say it now. Well, I just wanted to join this meeting tonight to let you know that a number of local traders had a really, really good meeting on Tuesday with Sarah Ward, who is the Democracy Reporter for the Stamford Mercury, who as a result of this has actually published a really nice article in the online paper today. When I thanked her, she said I would also be in the paper paper. And I wanted to use the occasion of that article just to feed back to the town council that whatever support we, we as a trader group received so far is very much appreciated. Now, there have been meetings, but it feels they, some momentum has been lost. So I just wanted to reassure you that the support is valued and needed. But I also wanted to offer up myself as a point of liaison between local traders and the town councils, specifically for those traders meeting. That doesn't mean I'm going to organise or chair them, but I just wanted to be the in-between in terms of setting dates, you know, dissemination of dates, information, that kind of stuff.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Just to carry on with the meeting on Tuesday, it was very good and I think a lot of the traders had some recommendations and suggestions. And I think there was just a question of how we get that over to the council. So things like extended parking times and things to get foot traffic into the town. So that's just something that I think came up, how do we actually get those things going or who do we talk to? But generally, really good feel amongst everybody. Everyone's so supportive and really, we just want the best for the town.
Great, and the article I thought was very good.
Very good.
Sarah as well, yeah, that was a nice article.
Yes, I think Sarah gave you quite a lot of space, quite a bit before I came here, it was nice.
Yeah.
So yeah, I think the best way to communicate anything that arose from that meeting or probably in the future, I would suggest communicate that to Cathy in the office at present. Unless anyone has any better ideas to, and then collate the ideas that we can discuss it and see what we as a council can do to just support that in that town.
And I was asked, how is this going to work out with the, is this you having instead of the one that we've been doing as a council? Because...
No, no.
It's addition, is it?
No, my being here is just to kind of feedback. It's just a feedback, please, let's keep it going. And I know that the council has struggled at the moment or is struggling with manpower. But, so this is, this is just feedback from us, that it is a really valuable point of discussion and please, can we keep it going? So it just, yeah, me saying, let's...
The lady from Rotherham County Council mentioned at the next meeting that we were supposed to be having. You weren't there when you was for Victoria Hall. The funding for businesses is coming up again and I don't want you to lose that by, I don't understand. If you are having a separate meeting.
Not separate, no, no, we want it all rolled into one, I think that's the purpose, just to...
Yeah, because I don't want you to miss out, because that did happen before.
Kind of called it an intra-meeting with traders that could be available to talk to the reporter, whereas a completely separate meeting.
No, 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 I didn't, I just found how important it is that we've got to work together. So that you don't miss out on the funding.
But I'll tell you that it wasn't a separate meeting. Those meetings are still continuing as normal, the traders. The meeting we had on Tuesday was not a separate meeting. But because we have got a date for the next traders' meeting, I'm here to say, let's keep it, maybe even book a whole set of six meetings in advance. So everybody knows when they are, maybe different days, and then just stick with it.
Yeah, as an aside to that, I'm keen not to turn this into a large conversation, but hey, hey, if you have did reach out and say that she's on hold with the rest of this month, but as of the start of July, she likes her meeting regardless, official SPF.
So should we, sorry, should we email Cathy just some of the points that came up? Because they are points that have come up again and again in the other meetings as well, in the official traders' meetings.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Lovely, very nice. Fantastic. Okay, on to item number four, the minutes, two, perhaps five minutes. On the fourteenth of May twenty twenty five, I feel this might be a slightly contentious topic. Councilor Brooks, kick it off.
Yes, and I'm afraid I don't think we can accept the minutes as a true and accurate statement of what happened due to the, I don't know how to explain it. I think a clerical error would be best to say publicly, but also they weren't published online, which is a requirement. So I think maybe we could just defer rather than...
I would be inclined to agree.
Debate about what's wrong with it.
I would be inclined to agree with you, Councilor Brooks. I think that it'd just be prudent to do that, obviously with our issues that we are or have been experiencing in the office and there's a bit of a hangover from that. I think that's our clerical staff will look a bit slack at the moment. And yes, we shall, shall we defer those to the next meeting's actual proposal?
Could we also note that we should have had some basic minute for last week's council meeting that didn't happen? Because that's not been done, because if we get an internal audit next year and maybe Cathy has retired or no one's here, it will look like the internal auditor that it wasn't minuteed. And also for our, your extra meeting that didn't happen, because these were advertised, you see. And the one that me and Sally Ann called, I did provide a minute to say that it didn't progress because it was poor. And they should all be here tonight to be approved.
Have they paid for that in that case?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
We'll check that, although you can sit down.
Mine was, and Sally Ann did the week before, and then yours was mine. But I'm sure there's a record of...
There will be, and we can treasure it pretty easily, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so proposing that we defer the meeting minutes of the fourteenth of May until the next full council meeting, Councilor Brooks?
Yes, because also just to point out that that was our annual meeting, but it was just described as a full meeting of the council as well. So that was the starting point of things, but I can't sit there all night and read it all off, can I?
If you do have some notes, Councilor Brooks, that you'd be willing to share for the efficacy of filling out that to its full, to make amendments, it would be appreciated. I think you've already sent them out.
Yeah, maybe I'll do it again and give it just to you, I'm confused, and I'll just go through it and just say what I felt.
Understood. And shall we, is anyone going to second that? Is there a proposal? All those in favour of deferring the minutes? Thank you very much. Lovely. On to number five, Chairman's Report. I'm happy to forego a chairman's report. Would anybody like to make a report today?
What happened at the party in the park on Sunday? No, the meeting, the, there was a note in the, in one of the websites about a spat in the park. What was that about?
Councilor Wosworth and I had a conversation that probably could have gone a little bit better in hindsight. I think both of us could have approached the situation a little bit better. And it was publicised, in my opinion certainly, to have been rather grandised into something that it wasn't.
It was a great pity, because it seemed like it was a lovely afternoon for the folk of Oakham and it was marred by the report on one of the websites.
I would agree with you. It was absolutely wonderful event. It was very well attended, music was fantastic.
I did, you're referring to my report, but I did actually do a separate report to say what a good day it was. I mean, it was, I'm not a person for confrontation and I found it quite upsetting. And I had mentioned that to our chairman and whether I took his email wrong or whatever, I didn't find his response to me helpful at the time. I mean, you know, it wasn't, I didn't see the first part of the instant, I saw the second part and I saw how a councillor felt and it affected me. And I just felt that, and it's not the first time that we've had issues amongst councillors which have turned quite heated, I think is the word. And I, and I really want it to stop.
Because I can't understand how things like that help people to have a positive view about Acre Town Council. Some of the comments on the website kind of echo that. And we always seem to be getting as negative publicity and I think it's a disgrace.
We had one negative, this is the exaggeration, the chairman, we, one, one thing, now Paul Lansley, before he went off stick, wrote me a very condescending and passive aggressive email saying that he'd read all the articles that I published under my title, as community editor of Oakham and Rotherham News, and said all apart from one had been very good for the town council. So then I will shut up because I can't show you that email. So I think when people on social media make the comments, they may not like what they've seen and they do exaggerate and say it's all negative.
I hope so, a lot of people did say that they didn't see anything happen, so...
So it's, because there were so many people there, noise, so if it were a quiet event, they might have noticed. But anyway, we mustn't go on because it's...
And I mean, I would encourage anyone that is writing articles regarding anything that goes on, that articles are truthful and do not grandise problems that are not there or certainly are not witnessed, if you're going to make that request.
Well, the article I wrote didn't actually say any untruths because I, I didn't point the finger of blame at anybody.
I think regardless, that's, that's all I'll say on the matter, but if we can...
I'm not so objective to your email and your medical advice.
If we can just collectively appreciate that that's what we're trying to do.
Hopefully we can, as you said to the reports of them all called together and move on because we, we really need to.
Absolutely, let's do that. And that's all I'm calling for, okay? Wonderful. So, item number six, bank statements. My apologies. Item number five, would we like to, I propose that we note the discussion that we understood that we've had it. Would anyone like to second that? Proposed by Councilor Clark.
That's not on the agenda, but I think we've been quite grown up.
Yeah, I suppose you're a bit just not prepared for it.
Proposed by Councilor, Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Wosworth, I think. All those in favour? There we are, that's unanimous. And yes, long may that continue. I might have a word, thank you for it.
Does the clerk like to report to the amounters? No?
I thought you, I do apologise, I thought you had been emailed.
The clerk's report. If, if there is one.
I do apologise, only seven. I've got seven, and six, the next thing.
Yeah, no, she just, she has this back, but she just brings it out, so she's not actually being on here. As far as...
Item six. Okay.
Okay, I was a little disappointed with the amount of money that we are paying out to Millennium Computer Services. Last month we paid them one thousand seven hundred and sixty nine pounds and forty eight pence. So with that, I did ask Cathy to give me a breakdown on what we're actually spending all that money on. It did bring up a few interesting things. They sent me a statement, which I've not got in front of me yet, or his name. That was quite interesting because it just went... Sorry, gone. I mean, the first half of the activity statement, the Millennium statement, there is a lot of overpayments and we have got refunds for. So we need to be just a little bit more careful when we're doing these bills that they are, you know, everything is checked properly. I'm saying it wasn't, but, you know, we need to be a little bit more... I don't know what the word is, because I'm not clever, so, but we just need to be very careful what we are spending the money on. I mean, we have spent, one of the things that came up was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty four pound is for the annual domain hosting. Now, I know we probably do have to pay that, but then a bit further on, we've got one thousand two hundred and seventy one pounds for business standard annual subscription, exchange online and renewal thirtieth of June. So that, because it's not really explaining what those things are, which is what I really wanted. That's an awful lot of money, one thousand two hundred and seventy one for a business standard annual subscription and exchange. And then on top of that, we're paying a hundred and forty four pounds for hosting, on top of eighteen pounds ninety four or ninety six, depending on the weather, on service charges that we pay once a month. So, as they were coming from, they seem to prepare charges for an awful lot of things that, and we've had two hundred and seventy three pound twice for platinum support, WFH, whatever that is, NAS backup, AB and RMMN. I mean, I'm not a business person, so I don't understand all these letters. Another fifty pound for business and another fifty two pound for the exchange. And we get that two hundred and seventy three pound happens probably, but I think it's on our statement this time, twice. So that's twice that we've paid that. So is it something that we have to pay monthly? Or is it something that we pay fortnightly? Or is it just because they've not been paid that they've shown up so many times on one month?
Do you think it would be prudent then for us to approach the office to ask Millennium for a latent terms breakdown of exactly what we're paying for?
Because I, I mean, I will accept these, because obviously they have been paid and it's what Millennium have asked for, so it's been paid. But at the end of the day, the majority of our payments this month have gone to Millennium and it's just very concerning that we are paying out so much money for...
On the subject, it would seem it's all the subscriptions landing at the same time, but again, let's investigate that further, yes. Councilor Brooks?
On the subject of Millennium, I noticed that on the twelfth of the second, we've got a refund of two hundred and seventy three pounds. And then we paid it back on the same, on the, on the twelfth of the fifth. So there's something that I'm not happy with. And we'll mention that probably when we discuss the internal audit, because we don't know what these payments are for. And one of the things that's come up again in the internal audit is that nobody's checking initially the invoices. And I brought this up when I first came back to council, that two councillors were given that position to go to the office before the meeting and they checked the invoices, they checked the payments and initialled them, which is what's mentioned in the thing, what you call the word there, reconciliation. That's not happening. So when we come here, we just have to assume that we did actually owe that money to Millennium, which we shouldn't have to. So hopefully we're going to move forward and put that position in place. But talking about Millennium, when I came back to the council, I had a coffee morning with a councillor and two organisations came up in that conversation, what do I know about them? So I do believe that Millennium, there could be an issue with people not understanding what we're paying for. So I wanted, I brought this meeting in the financial section of the next meeting to appoint a working group. We're very, very small and who would, with the clerk or the deputy clerk, have a meeting with Millennium and actually go through everything that we pay for, because they make no sense to me. Sally Ann let me look at them. It makes no sense at all what we are paying for. I guess we pay a monthly gold thing if the computers break down and then we wouldn't get a bill, but we don't know.
If my memory serves, there are a number of, there's a whole raft of things, i.e. retained services, I believe our broadband and fire contractors managed. There's a, there's an array of things, but yes, I agree, we need full transparency and latent terms as to what we're paying for.
Yeah, and then if we do come up and find, because there seems to be all these refunds on a page and all sorts of things. So to me, that suggests it's not running, that's all last year.
That was, yes.
It seems to me that there is something wrong that needs to be looked at. Now, when we do come to the internal audit, you'll notice that it's cherry picked, you know, basically he only does what, but if he'd looked at that, he might have even come to the same conclusion, what's going on here, but he didn't. So can we have a working group or shall we?
I think we should do finance.
Shall we, shall we, yeah, shall we, I think that falls firmly in the remit of finance. I think, alluding to your point, Councilor Brooks, I think at some point, it might be wise for us as a council to consider a scrutiny committee. But let's, let's discuss that in another, another session, I think. In the meantime, if I could ask Mel to make a note so that we can instruct the office to make that request, at least at Millennium to let us know exactly what's going on with last statement.
Yeah, but they did this for Sally Ann, through the office's requests, so I think they're quite open to give us details.
But because we're not magic hat, you don't have all the touches.
Well, they're closed somewhere, we're shady about the same, we don't, I don't know.
So we're all, all happy with how we're going to go on from that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and then I had two, I don't know if you can pass.
Say what comes, Brooks, is this related directly to the...
It's the finance thing.
To the realtors?
Are we doing it at realtors' or can I just ask, because I only have one other?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's the, who is the Apogee Corporation that we paid a hundred and eleven pounds sixty four to? And the second thing was Edison's, who I believe might be surveyors, and it was two thousand four hundred pounds. Who did that relate to or what, please? Just on the twelfth of May.
Also back in May, okay. I don't have that information to hand. And regards Edison's there, I know they're involved in the toilets contract, so Edison's and Metcalfe are involved in the toilet contract. I think they may have business for.
Ah, so...
That's, that's another one for you. Do you mind just making a note?
Because we just took a guess that it might have been Victoria Hall, so, which we had approved.
It also could well have been, let's, let's just have a look into that and see.
Is it Edison's or Metcalfe's?
It doesn't, it's just a commercial.
So it's on the twelfth of May, Edison's, and it's two thousand four hundred pounds. And also on the twelfth of May, Apogees, about A P O G E Corporation, a hundred and eleven pounds sixty four. But there wasn't any other, apart from all the Millennium things, wasn't there? Oh, and then the other point, I can just make a comment, the toilets were disgusting and they seemed to have cost an absolute pork chain.
That's the...
The fifth also rose, you know, over a thousand pounds at the last one.
Other than those points, Councilor Brooks, are you, are you happy or just contented with the financial statements?
I believe it's...
True and accurate representation. If you're happy, Councilor Brooks, we'll be on block, unless you have the...
No, the problem I have, and I explained with it, is obviously that we did an assessment, said it's checked, but we don't know who checked it or whatever. So I will probably abstain until we get sorted with the two councillors who will do the checks and then we know that it's...
Understood. And right, so in that case, I'm proposing us to accept the all financial statements on blocks, six point one, six two, six three, six four. And six five, which constitutes reconciliation, current account, deposit account, year-to-date spend and allowance, current account. Would anyone like to second that? Thank you, Councilor Wosworth, all those in favour of acceptance? That's three, four. Councilor Brooks, my statement. So that is it. We are, yes, I'm, thank you. Councilor Wosworth, second. Not listening to you. Okay, on to the next juicy item. Number seven, the appointment of a local clerk. Paper number seven, so this is a strategic aim being to enable effective running of the OCC office from the absence of the clerk. I think this has been a long time coming and I think we're all probably, probably itching for this to go ahead. So would anyone like to debate or, anyone like to kick it off?
Please, go ahead.
Start with. Have we had any conversations with the clerk, Christopher Evans, on his, has anybody made a wellbeing phone call to him to find out what's the situation?
Strictly speaking, a wellbeing call, I don't think has. I believe he's given contact with Cathy in the office, essentially keeping a line of contact open, although not intrusive in any way for him. It's my understanding that based on that, he intends to submit a further, a further note, excuse me. So yes, we will. I will shortly, as soon as we can get the, all of this audit paperwork done, and there's a little bit of shared bandwidth with the council, I think it would be wise to visit the occupational health assessments of our, of our staff from a staffing committee perspective. And I think it'd be wise to act on any recommendations that have been put forward and to certainly follow up with our clerk on his wellbeing and look at a strategy and a plan for bringing him back in and supporting him as best we can to do so.
Okay, so from that, which means version, if we're going to go through a local clerk, how long do we think it's going to take to get one?
Well, it's my suggestion that we use SLCC to approach this situation. I understand that organisations of the such do come with a premium, but there is a cost associated with that. The benefit of that being that the validity and experience of the local clerk that we'll be getting will have the full expert backing of that particular organisation that places them. My hope, not all that long is, is my hope personally, but at the moment, it's, it's not something we can, we can really throw in the air.
My next question is, we did agree to some admin money, a couple of, well, they're pools, whatever. Would it be advisable to employ somebody to just do admin work for the time being? Because obviously Anna was doing some and now she's got her own problems and not being able to come in and do them, as far as I understand. And from conversations that I've had with Cathy, I feel that she is starting to get overloaded again and my concern is that she is going to go off it again.
I, I think we're all keen to avoid that happening, aren't we?
So my thoughts are maybe we should be looking at employing somebody to just help in the office. Maybe a day or two days a week, just...
As well as the local?
As well as the local.
Okay.
Just so that if, if Chris Evans comes back in, say, the next two weeks... Just so that if, if Chris Evans comes back in, say, the next two weeks, when he comes back, he's not going to come back and do what he was doing before. So who is to have somebody in the office doing the basic work and getting these jobs done? You know, like the flower boxes and whatever else that are highlighted this week with Cathy, um, and the wall, which is still not being done. If we just had somebody who could just click through the papers and.
I think that there is a tremendous administrative burden on council at the moment. I agree with you, one person in the office. I think perhaps any at all help on an ad hoc basis is not a bad idea, personally speaking. Um, so yeah, in that case, if, if, shall we raise that? I'm quite happy to raise that as an adjustment and a consideration on this paper.
Yep.
So to, to add on to the local clerk, that we would, that we agree to appoint a, an administrative.
Support.
Thank you, administrative support officer of sorts, um, to help share.
Yeah, it might only be for three months or something, but obviously it just depends on how many times to get a local clerk in, how many times Chris to come back, if he's coming back and, you know. It all just depends, doesn't it?
It does, so I'm just, I'm noting this. I'm noting this as we go on, so apologies for the delay. Okay, would we care at this point to put in place any approximate guidelines? Or shall we just leave that to our best judgment at a time on an ad hoc basis?
Yeah, I think that's definitely to.
Councilor Brooks.
I was going to go back to the local clerk bit. Um, we, we had one before and remember the council said they didn't like that. I sort of, my personal thing from what I witnessed as an outside person, very similar to what recently apparently happened in Uppingham. Um, we need to set some guidelines for the office. For instance, the last local clerk this council had stayed, we won't mention names, but stayed in a boutique hotel. You wouldn't get that unless you were working in a very top job. So if the person does have to come from a distance and that, I think we've got to look carefully at where they stay, you know, there's like a holiday inn, which business people stay in at Mountain. Or the alternative is that we just pay, which will be cheaper than the hotel for them, their transport, whether that's a train ticket or whether it's the mileage which is set by the government. Now, I've worked in the past for organisations that sent me away and you can expect to get a mill, um, but we shouldn't be paying like we did last time for eating in the restaurant every day. So my suggestion is that members set a mill allowance if required, not that we give it to them, but if it is somebody coming and they've got to stay in a hotel or a B and B, I've stayed in a B and B when I worked for a company. Um, so we then give them a mill house because maybe twenty pounds, twenty pounds will get you a main course, you shouldn't be paying for the wine and the dessert, you know, to make it. So I'm not being mean, I'm just saying, this taxpayers' money, last time it cost this council a lot of money for the local clerk and it was mainly expenses.
May I say I wholeheartedly agree with that sentiment? I think what I would be keen to avoid at the moment, because we simply do not know the threshold financially as a figure, what we will be like, well, suggest Martin is that we go perhaps for, that we use uh, the government guidelines for working and staying away and government best practice for real allowances and such.
Yeah.
To dictate the way in which we go forward, like, as you said, that we, that we consider the most effective, uh, the most financially effective, um, form of engagement, whether that's an overnight stay or whether that's transportation, depending on that, and we visit that by case-by-case basis, depending on the local that we look to inform.
I mean, you can even go back to Martin Flumm, and he, he actually worked remotely hard at the time. So that is a thing that could save costs, that providing they've got access to certain things.
We just need to see what, SCL, whatever, which that company ages offers. And then have, then have a look at it and then from what we see on that piece of paper, I mean, it might come from across the road. We never know if we'd be so lucky.
So I, it's rather a loose term, sorry, Martin, and it's rather a loose term, but shall I say that we are seeking to install a local clerk to deal with all the formations of the council, um, following agreed financial best practices agreed in-house?
Yeah, can we delegate you and perhaps Chris Clark as his business orientated? Uh, because if you ever have things, it always in the rule says you've got to have two people and this has come up in the audit report, isn't it? The risk assessment. So I think that if we can delegate this evening that you work with the office to get this sorted to the best for the council, then it's not going to put pressure on Cathy to. She, she's already told me that they were going to look at this company, so she knows what's going on, but I think to take the pressure off if we, if we could maybe in the proposal delegate, because we can give you delegated powers to sort that out.
So you're suggesting that we can go ahead, uh, without seeking further ratification from the council as long as we are seen?
Yeah, I think because it's an emergency and that's what happened in the past, that they just authorised it and I'm not an expert on these things, but I think as long as the council's admitted it and agreed it, then I don't see that there's any comeback really. We, you can't not have a clerk really in the council. And if we're talking about the length of time, I think maybe you could review it month by month because I do like the idea that, I believe it happened when Chris took over and there was this local clerk, it may have been Ben. Um, there's a sort of handover period so that the person doesn't just come into work and not know what's going on. Yeah, so I think if it's reviewed monthly, that could be a, a good thing.
Okay.
And that would may help with Chris Evans to know that he's, if he comes back to work, he's not just going to find a partner on his desk.
Yeah, that's, that's demoralising in itself, you're coming back to a problem, isn't it? Okay, so my suggestion, you know, I've taken that at one point.
Unless Sally Ann wants to help, but I've just, I've just pointed to Chris, because I know he has a business thing. So it was just a suggestion, it's up to the council to decide who wants to be delegated, I think the chairman has to be.
Yeah, I'm happy to certainly do that. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I'm happy to, in fact, I did want to raise something and it touched on something that, um, as Wasworth was saying, was about the contact with the clerk.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think in the business, it would normally, there would be informal meetings with it or conversations with the individual on the council. I wonder whether that's something that, and others doing the point you're making about the various assessments, simply, um, a, an informal contact with the, with the clerk during his absence to see, well, partly to pick up Martin's point, Councilor Brooks' point, about there won't be a mountain of work for you when you come back. I just think it'd be normal to have a, a conversation and initially, it would be up to the clerk to decide how frequently that would take place, but I think we ought to, at least reach out to him.
Because he has been off quite a while, so he does seem to touch it, I see there.
We have a duty, you know, he's a member of the team. So initially, having a conversation with him and agreeing with him, if you like, rules of engagement, how long, how often do they look in fact?
Yep, uh, I agree and if everyone's happy for me therefore, please, I'll pencil that in for a conversation with them. I should do that.
You don't have to, because I obviously make up these assessments, John.
Yes, yeah.
You don't have to mention that, but wellbeing is just to see how he's getting on and how he feels.
Yep.
Let him risk going back on, obviously. But you can't ask him that.
That's certainly an absolutely.
I'm impressed by a second age and a conversation.
Informal wellbeing and a bit of conversation. Lovely, so let's try and distill that into, into some good news, shall we? So we're proposing therefore to agree the installation of a local clerk, reviewed by a monthly basis. Uh, I'd suggest probably at the chair's support stage in each company meeting, suitable. It's suggested that myself and Councilor Clark are engaged in vetting a suitable applicant and putting forward a suitable financial remuneration package that is, that we consider would be best practice.
Working with the office.
Yes, thank you, in conjunction with the office. Sorry, I know this is a bit of a response on that.
But we have to get it right. I said we have to get it right.
It's nice to use concise language now. Happy, lovely. Uh, and, and that I will reach out to Chris Evans for a, for the wellbeing chat. Wonderful, would anyone like to close that?
And the, the office member of staffs?
Thank you.
Tell that.
Thank you.
And we've already, we've already approved a budget of five thousand pounds for that.
For the admin run, wonderful, thank you for your memory on that. Okay, would anyone like to propose that? Well, Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Wasworth. And all those in favour, wonderful, that is unanimous, brilliant.
Yes.
Right, we can get on with the, with the business of getting on with the business. Okay, agenda item eight, here we are, this shouldn't be too tricky, one would open. So we're looking to accept the retrospective appointment of Mr S McDonald as the in, as the internal auditor. Is that outlined in the engagement letter that was sent later dated to the twentieth of fifth, twenty five? Does anybody have any contentious issue with that?
Um.
Get on with it.
Well, I don't know, I don't like to first.
Who does anybody else, it's just you.
Yes, because I, I actually asked about this when it was just told to me, that the auditor was coming in on a certain day. So this was the first, I heard of it and I did ask the question, who appointed this auditor because we hadn't? And, and the consequences I mentioned of any councillor that just goes out and does their own thing. Um, I would be kind of not mention names at this stage on here, but this letter concerned me that appeared with our agenda this week, it's the first time I've seen this letter. And it says, I've been instructed by my parish council to request that Leicester Turnup and Association of Local Councils carry out our internal audit for the financial year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, I'll stop there. And that's the letter you referred to, to Mr McDonald on the twentieth of fifth, twenty twenty five. Now, I can't recall or find anything where we instructed this councillor to do this. So I have a big problem with that, that it's come retrospective. I have a problem that they, I don't believe they worked solely on their own, but they signed this. And I think it's very wrong and I, I can't, I won't be voting to accept it, retrospective. And I would like that also to be recorded when it comes to the vote.
Uh, just for clarification, if I may, for my own curiosity and nothing else, Councilor Brooks. Um, is it the, the text itself or simply the principle that you're objecting to?
It's, it's the text because the text is an admission that they've done it under the instruction of this council, which they didn't have instruction to do it from this council, I see. So it's a huge mess up, sorry, I use, I use plain English, um, it should not have happened. And I don't know who worked with that person because that person is very new to the council and it seems a bit. I don't know what word to use, I won't, I won't go off.
If you'll permit me to submit my tolerance on the matter, um, as, as everyone is well aware, we have had some very serious issues with our office staff, mainly absenteeism. Um, you know, not, not, not sort of talking that down, it's been, it's been an issue that has been particularly prevalent at that time when, I believe, memory serves again, we had both of our office staff off at that time, I believe. Obviously, the, the huge amount of burden not having our regular RFO report and I believe a templated letter, albeit saying what it says, Councilor Brooks, I appreciate the, the point that you are raising. I make the assumption that that is a templated letter. Um, so again, I'm, I'm not going to pass judgment, only that it seems that the person engaged in that had the absolute best interest of open, telling us at heart.
But I think they should have followed.
Well, I agree, but given that there was, we hadn't sought extension and there was nothing further put in place. I think this person has done an admirable job in trying to get our affairs in order in a timely manner. And I think that, I, I understand what you're saying with regard to the undertaking of due diligence. However, I think this person's interests are, are very much reflecting our own as a council.
But that's why I'm not naming publicly, but I, it is, it's something that shouldn't happen again.
We shouldn't have two office staff off at the same time.
No, but even then, somebody's made the decision to book an appointment that we didn't know about.
Yeah, and that's fair enough, I, I would argue the point of extenuating circumstances. And I think if that's all right with you, Councilor Brooks, you're leaving there, I understand that your, your vote will be recorded as, as a, as an against or an abstention.
I'm going to vote against it, although I don't, retrospective, it's not, it's not something I've never seen on an agenda here. And we've done some bad things in the past, but.
That's, that's fair enough, Councilor Brooks. Right, okay, so I'm going to raise the point nonetheless. So I propose that we accept the retrospective appointment of Mr S McDonald as the internal auditor, uh, as outlined in the letter of engagement, would anyone like to second that? Thank you very much, Councilor Clark, all those in favour of accepting the retrospective application of Councilor, of Mr S McDonald, excuse me. Thank you. Any abstentions? One abstention, one against, not Councilor Brooks, and that's recorded, therefore, motion has carried. Okay, and agenda item page two, we propose that we accept the internal audit report dated to be thirteenth of June, twenty twenty five. I feel we'll have a chance to prove this fine document.
Yeah, I mean, just saying we improved slightly. And that has got to be a plus for the, for the last twelve months, has been quite.
Torrent, should we say?
Yeah, that'll do.
Tricky.
Yes.
Um, I, I would agree with that, that, um, assessment, Councilor Wasworth. Um, yeah, it shows improvement, um, granted, we're not, as, as usual, we are not fully compliant in, in this regard. It's my hope that this year and my tenure, we will be fully compliant, I would very much enjoy that. I understand that there are certain items that are still sort of ongoing, we're finding our feet. So I would like to think that we can, we can be fully compliant this year, that would be, that would be a feather in the cap for the council, I believe.
May I, sorry. I think that's admirable, admirable, but I think we should have a plan to make sure that we, uh, we do those things over the period and that we regularly check progress at the meeting to make sure we're on track to achieve that. Yeah, we all like, as you say, to be, for everything to be different next year, but let's make sure we have a plan to achieve that.
Oh, that sounds like a fantastic opportunity to amend one of these proposals, Councilor Clark, okay? So off the back of that, shall we suggest that we accept the inter, let's raise it as a separate proposal. Can you imagine this? Not at all. Shall we do this and then, and then have a further discussion, still on topic?
Yes, and I would like to make a comment firstly, but as you said, shall we do this? I was just saying, I, I was agreeing with what you were saying, but like pointing out that I wanted to make a comment.
Shall we vote on that and then come to your comment? Would you be happy with that or is it pertinent before the vote?
Well, sorry, but I don't know.
Just to accept the audit report?
Um, well, I won't be accepting the audit report because, but that's fine. Um, so can I make my comment before we vote?
Please do.
Um, one of the things from the audit report that was quite important to notice was that, yes, it was satisfactory or, or not satisfactory, it was unsatisfactory, which was better than, um, last year's. But in our minutes that we were supposed to approve this evening, somehow the audit report from the previous year popped up in the. the audit report from the previous year popped up in the minutes and um it's an ongoing issue, that's a word that's been used, because that reminded me that actually things haven't been properly done since twenty twenty one, that's last year's audit report, so. And most of the things were just noted. And things I've raised since coming back to the council, such as people need to be two people, at least two people to verify things and minutes not initial, were all the things that have been said before. So I I I don't understand how we're going to get out of this without actually really looking at it, because we've got a year before the next one. So we should be looking at this as a section of section. Because as I mentioned tonight, our minutes from the fourteen may weren't put on the website. And that is a legal requirement, so that would become under the Transparency Act, which they say that we don't comply with. So there's a lot of things, but in in his letter, he says that he was only checking what he was given and I was told that Anna very kindly worked and couldn't be there and left what she wanted him to check. So my opinion was that actually, i- if he'd gone to other things, he might have actually found it a bit worse. And.
I don't, I don't believe he was in the office unaccompanied, I think.
No, no, he was with, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that.
She could have helped him find whatever he had requested, had he have requested other things.
Well, he made it very clear that he just did what he was shown.
But he had the opportunity to ask her.
Yes, and one one of the questions I would have if I spoke to him, why did he not look at the biggest contract that the council went into, which we all know didn't quite comply with certain legal legal things? And it would have been helpful if he'd looked at that and just said, actually, you didn't put it on at the right time, you didn't do this and you didn't tender correctly. But so that would have, but he didn't.
Discussion and possibly disagreement, um, but.
But I I just, you know, so I'm just sort of like saying that, but how do we, how, I think Chris was saying about it, that we need to look at this and not just, am I reading you right? That we don't just file it for another year.
Absolutely right. It must, it has to be a working document to see that when it comes next year, we are perfect.
Yeah, well, we're never be perfect, but.
So may we.
But actually.
But attractive, we possibly.
But there is no reason why he couldn't just pick up things and go, oh, my goodness, you've initialled everything and two councillors are checking all the invoices and initialing them and everything's been ratified correctly, you know, it's not difficult.
No, it's attention to detail, which we're talking about in terms of this.
The the council has never had this situation, and I tell people this outside, because they all talk about brown envelopes, we had it today. And we, this council has, apart from the petty cash thing the couple of years, but this council has never had an issue of mentioning in the audit report anything financially wrong, i.e. dishonesty or anything. It's just purely not following the potential features and that's what frustrates me.
The attention to detail.
Yeah.
So can I ask you a somewhat loaded question, councillor Brooks? Do you agree with the content and fabric of this document?
I agree with what you say.
So you can. So you can accept the internal audit report dated thirty of June twenty twenty five? Because you agree with the document, correct?
I think I can, though, now you put it that way.
I understand.
I just needed to express my frustration.
Understood, understood.
And to point out that it's cherry picked. It's not really looking in depth. It would probably be horrific if we had an auditorium and went through everything. You know, like procedure wise.
So my my slight amendment to this, and I'll make my proposal now, uh, is going to be to accept this internal audit report as written and use it as a working document to inform our financial and procedural obligations for this coming year.
Yeah, and it's it's also.
Maybe, maybe the clerk would update us each meeting as to which bits have done.
It has to be on the agenda each meeting with progress that's being made to achieve what.
So I mean, they can just start off at number one and read down and say, oh, yeah, we've done that. I'll tell the council at the next meeting that that's what we've installed this time and next time, blah, blah, blah.
We always get an issue by the legal documentation, like posting notices. Literally, it has to go on the website and it has to just, it only has to go on the notice board outside the door, but we do other things. But I would like to get to the situation where the clerks come in and say, on this day, I put the notice up. That's what I think we're trying to say.
Check, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's it's. The agenda item nine, it's it's too different.
Yeah, well, our agendas have not been written properly because it's just like, I shouldn't say it publicly, but it's almost like there's somebody down there at the last minute and just. Because we don't have a.
It's there somewhere.
It is, yeah. Lovely. So we'd be happy with the amendment to that.
Yeah.
I've written as well, so we can, we can confer to ensure that that is a true, true and accurate statement, so. Apologies, so I've made the proposal. Uh, who'd like to second that one? Okay, all those in favour of acceptance of the document and using it as a working document to inform, lovely, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Lovely. Isn't this, isn't this going well?
Oh, yes.
Agenda item nine. So agenda item nine, we have AGAR, AGAR, so uh, to ensure financial, to ensure financial governance, so we are looking to populate and agree upon section one of the AGAR as proposal number one. So you will have all got a uh a report there.
But we we don't actually have any of the answers ticked on ours.
Ah, right.
So we probably, we probably need to go.
Would you, I was going to say, I do have the document here that was submitted.
Well, we all got it ticked.
Yes. I think, would you like.
We've got the figure, but we don't have.
Would you like to review that now, councillor Brooks?
It'd be helpful to know what we're going to accept.
And I shall save your legs and read that.
Lovely. Could you, is it just one sheet?
Uh, it's a few. I think, well, shall I?
I don't know, you could show me a copy.
Certainly, would you like that?
Oh, yes, we ticked, because we need to check that they are right.
So if you're, if you are happy, these, obviously, as you can see.
Well, I would need to read it.
Would you like to, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll quickly.
This is why I said I was proposing not to vote to this because we haven't been, I think, it's not, this is not.
No, that's the one.
The retrospective machine is off.
Hi. Two seconds.
Yes. Because it's a very important document, it has to be right, and it was wrong last year, unfortunately, I wasn't. I think it might have been wrong the year before as well.
Oh, well, that's me then, isn't it? I would say.
No, I think the clerk did it more poorly, because I think it is actually, should be the clerk that does it.
Indimably, so we, as a council, approve it all.
Yeah, so we, if we have something to actually. If we actually had something to approve, it would be good, wouldn't it? Which Chris has thought in, but it's like, because you've got to read all those headings and there's quite a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, it's sticky.
Okay.
So.
It's infectious.
Um.
Can I just check something, councillor Brooks? On item six, did, could I just check that you were against not staying? I do apologize.
On this six?
Yes.
About six.
No, I abstained for that because I, because they hadn't been verified by the government.
So I think it's not the fastest-paced copper in the world, um, so.
Costs a lot of money.
I mean, I think it is very nice.
Although we didn't pay for it this month, I know.
Maybe that's why.
Yeah.
It knows.
Oh, my apologies. It is just one sheet and I have got all the copies.
Is that it?
Just the one sheet.
This is it.
Is that the section one? Have you got section two, too?
Well, none of these are ticked either, so this is, because this first page hasn't been ticked either.
No, no, so I think the uh, the approach would be, so my understanding is we need to do page three, you mean, oh, page three and page five.
Yeah, because.
You've got page.
Because I believe page two doesn't normally get shown. I think that's what the clerk signs normally, isn't it? Yeah, just show that it's the day it ticked, let's do that.
And page four is undertaken by uh the chairman, clowns. So that's, so page four will be populated, or at least signed after we've.
You see, I I have an an issue just soon as we jump to number the B, where it says the authority complied with its financial regulations, payments were supported by all invoices, all expenditure was approved, and VAT was approximately properly accounted for. And I know full well that, well, even up to the point where I joined the council, that anything over five thousand pounds wasn't properly approved because the deputy clerk said to me, well, we've never done that before.
Okay, but um.
So how can we say that it has been done properly when I think most of us here know that it wasn't? Because even councillor Enslie read out at the last meeting, we had the financial regulation that we weren't following for the five thousand pound payment.
Fair enough, but at this point, so states solely that it's, the point's remit by its own is that payments were supported by invoices and all expenditure was approved. Based on that, I would, I would, that's how I would read that particular passage.
Yeah, but if you've not followed your financial regulations, then in my, in my opinion, that it's, it's not proved. It's like, tonight we were going to be approving the final payment of forty thousand pounds for the toilets, but that hasn't come. So, you know, the, that's sort of the issue I'm trying to point out, that we're saying that we have followed, but I don't believe we have.
I see. Um, no, anything to touch on that? Um, the, I've been informed that the, that that payment, that payment for Metcalf regards the toilet contract hasn't been paid, seeing as it was, seeing as, it it was already ratified, obviously in the original agreement, the the minutes of which I did reference on my last summonance. It has been ratified, that payment has been made, obviously that stage payment has not been formally brought towards council again. However, I've uh, I've had the office contact Metcalf regards the next stage payment and it will come to council and it will be accompanied by paper referring to the original minute as as requested.
But I thought that one that you just said has been paid was the final forty thousand pounds.
It's a stage payment.
Because at one time it was written as a final payment. I'm sure I saw it and I thought that was the final.
So my understanding is that that's not the final payment. Because there is, there is, there is a further invoice to come, which we will get the opportunity to review here at council again. In uh, in in line with what your requests are and the proper legislation.
The regulations.
Okay, so would we like to go through the cons, A through the rest? Should we just rather do it there? So I should propose that we agree with the highlighted points, just the page three or six of the AGAR report. Has sort of filled out, thank both councils, but. Yes. Uh, all those in favour of supporting? Thank you, councillor Clark. All those against? Councillor Brooks is against. Okay, because I got recorded, so. You recorded that, yeah. Okay, that has carried. Seeing as there's no exceptions, so I've jumped on to the conclusion somewhere there, but there's no else to abstain, so. Right.
And you definitely sounded likely, I know.
Okay. Right, so. So let's move on with the population of. Uh, sorry, section, we're still on section one, councillor, but on page four of six here now.
Yeah, we have got it ticked on.
It's that are not ticked.
We have the numbers.
We are, we are, we are ticking it ourselves.
How are they?
Have you got ticks on page four then?
No, we are, we are to tick the page and agree it today. As a council. So section.
I I would say yes for that because we adopted rather stupidly after we had to wait for a bank account to open. We adopted proper, up-to-date financial regulations.
Yeah.
So section one, yes?
Yeah.
We're all happy with that, fantastic. Someone was surprised, councillor Brooks, but I'm thrilled nonetheless.
No, if we do it properly, it's not an issue, is there?
Section two, they're putting it in places, actually making sure they happen.
Yes, but it doesn't ask us to do that, it just says that we have it there.
I think the answer to two is yes, particularly the point that councillor Brooks is making just now.
Yes, we.
I've been.
And we, we have a slight issue because I keep asking for it to be coming to council, is that our annual meeting, we just appointed the new signatories to the Lloyds Bank. And annually, we are supposed to appoint signatories to all our accounts, and we still have HSBC and we have the Cambridge Building Society. And that hasn't been done, so there is a slight risk that to the council, if the people from particularly the Cambridge Building Society might not even be members of this council anymore, so that is a work in progress.
Shall we suggest that to the finance committee for uh?
It should come to the, it should come to the next meeting of appointing signatories to all the accounts. Because it's an annual thing, the longer we leave it here.
Just raise a paper there for, for signatories to be counted.
So it'd be for the Lloyds, the Lloyds, we've done, we accepted that, so we don't need to, it's for HSBC and the Cambridge Building Society. So I have a bit of difficulty saying that would, that that is correct.
So can I have a show of hands accepting the point number two? Do, do, do.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I, have we, it's two, perhaps everyone happy with point two? That we've complied with it?
Yeah.
The problem with this form is there's not a, a maybe.
Yes.
Or or in hand, you know, um, they say yes or no. And that's just from what councillor Brooks is saying, it's yes in some situations, but not in all situations.
It's not fully completed, so.
I'm going to understand.
Okay. I will for you on number two.
Yeah, that's number two.
Three?
Right, I I'm going to have to say I'm slightly confused. I do apologize, it's a minor thing, I've just got one and two.
So let's. Whatever, whatever, we'll be happy if we did them as a recorded vote on each, each number of this particular chart.
Yeah.
Okay, so point one, so will we, is it, if you want to make a separate note, it's just the, just the fullness and transparency, which we would all love.
Thank you.
And I think. Two, two is about making sure that we have all banks.
So shall we, shall we just, for the sake of form, is section one?
Yeah.
Okay, so all agreeing to section one, show your hands please, okay?
I think, I think.
That was, you suggested your words, Martin, happy with that? So that was unanimous, everyone happy?
Yeah.
I I think on number two, we should actually say no. And then when they question it, we could then, they're going to ask, we can explain the situation.
But it says down here, please provide explanations to this. But it says down here, please provide explanations to the external audit on a separate sheet. He said, he's not going to come back and say why we said no, we have to put that with...
And we can say that it is going to come to the next meeting to ensure that the signatures are updated.
Okay, if we, yes, that's a, certainly then that's a more.
That's an honest answer.
It is, it is, that would be your own, I'll vote for that.
All in favour of that, of that approach, that we say no and we suggest our reasoning for that?
That we explain and what we're going to do about it.
Counselor Brooks, would, could I make a polite request that you might, you might raise the reasoning behind that? Would you be happy to do that or...
I think it can just be put to Cathy, because it's a, it's a thing that should have come to the annual meeting, and it's a requirement that the signatures are reviewed.
And, and also that they're up to date on all accounts.
Yeah, which is, as far as I know, that it is just the HSBC and the Lloyds we've done.
Lloyds we've done.
Yeah, because they needed to, otherwise we were in a problem.
And you do.
You have?
Yeah.
Excellent.
So that would be a separate piece of paper for Cathy, and she's doing it to, to explain that at our next meeting, we will be rectifying the issue with signatures.
Yes, so that's, that is a, that's going to be an upcoming agenda item then. Lovely, on to point three. We took all reasonable steps to ensure, to assure ourselves that there are no matters or, or actual or potential non-compliant laws, regulations, proper practices, that could have a significant financial effect on the ability of this authority to conduct its business and manage its finances. I would suggest that we say yes to that, because I do not foresee in anything that we've undertaken this last financial year, would this be sufficiently financially impactful?
I'm answering the question, no.
Because we haven't spent any money.
All those in favour, all those in favour of yes to that one, that's unanimous, marvelous. So section three. Lovely, on section four, we provided proper opportunity during each year for the exercise of elections, rights in accordance with the requirements of the accounting laws and regulations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because notices are up.
Brilliant, we all agree on that as well.
Yeah.
They have the opportunity.
Number five, we carried out an assessment of the risks facing this authority and took appropriate steps to manage those risks, including the introduction of internal controls and/or external insurance, however required.
We have insurance. As for risk assessments, it's a bit, it's a bit iffy, because I found out for our events that that's gone a bit by the way, that they're not being asked to fill out the required risk assessment forms, travers or whatever. So it's, it's, and we did do new policies, didn't we? But we have revised our policies this year on risk assessment.
So what was the risk, risk facing this authority then?
Well, you can't really say what the, the risk is when anything could happen at an event, don't you know?
Well, I mean, this is, this is generally geared towards financial risk as well, however, it does say financial and other...
Yeah, because if we had an accident, that could be, if we haven't completed a risk assessment form, you know, like where we've seen other councils, where they had fancy council accidents, if we haven't filled out a risk assessment form or the organisation hasn't followed us, and for instance, we had the Buckingham...
Bonco.
Bonco thing. If somebody had seriously injured themselves on that because it went wrong or something, and then the insurance company said to us, where's your risk assessment form? Oh, we didn't do it, that's going to cost us money.
So who, in that situation, are we required to do a risk assessment when the thing is organised by somebody else?
Yes, because we, the council approved that, any event that goes on and cuts close has a form from the office, which is filed at the office, because that, but it's, I don't know how long it's been, it's not happening, but I raised it long, long time ago because of incidents that we've seen in the media, because I learnt that we have the front there and it's never checked, no assessment or anything.
So we could perhaps then say no to this one, and I'll offer up that we could...
Well, I think we need clarification, because I think what we need is the risk assessment form from the people who are doing the events.
Yeah, which is in the office apparently. I found some old ones, because it used to be, and Cathy said I could throw them away at the weekend, because they were old, and it looks like it stopped when they said we weren't complying for things in 2021. So there's like these holders dated up to that period. So basically, the form was filled out, who was there, what they were doing, and it was kept in the shelter, which I didn't know that was there, I always thought they were kept in the office, but it looks like that...
I think it's kept in the shelter in case there was an accident and we needed to prove instantly that we were, had a risk assessment.
Yeah.
So that's why they were kept there.
So something that needs to be reviewed.
In a, in a conversation with Cathy that I've had this week, she has touched on the fact that that would be a good idea, and she's moving to keeping the documents handy at all times for these events.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm pleased that that's, that that's coming about. Um, in the meantime...
I don't know how we answer it.
Well, it is considered and documented, the financial and other of this, but we have considered them.
Perhaps, we perhaps might reach out and document them.
Yes.
So would we, would we...
Still have the yes there.
Sorry?
Said we could still have the yes there. Because we have considered them.
Okay, all in favour of accepting a yes in that particular box? Well, section five, for your reference there, Counselor Brooks, if you're...
Yeah, I'm looking at five, but we have most of it, we have insurance, very concerned to me that if we're not following procedures, that that is invalidated.
We could say therefore that we have considered it, whether we're following them or not.
I think I would like to abstain on number five.
So we have three, three, one abstention. We're nearly there, guys, we're nearly there, it's the last one. So, number six on this, we maintain throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit of the accounting records and control systems. Any strong feelings arising from that statement? So what this means for the council, we have arranged for a competent person, independent of financial controls and procedures, to give an objective view on whether internal controls meet the needs of the smaller authority. I can wholeheartedly say yes, we have a chance of that. Because we haven't seen...
In a roundabout way, we have, because we have our reports in front of...
Exactly.
We're not acting as the...
I propose that we all agree that that is a yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so point six is a yes. Number seven, we took appropriate action on all matters raised in reports from internal, external audit. What this means for us as a council, we responded to matters brought to its attention by internal and external audit.
I think that's what we've just got to do.
Yeah.
And of course, for all...
We have...
I would say for last year, my opinion would be that we, I would say no.
Well, then, this is a, this is a...
This is a going forward.
Well, no, this is an analysis of the year ending 31st of March.
So I would say that we didn't, because then we could say that we had 21, 22, 23, however many years that is of where things weren't proper, but moving forward, because that could be put in the letter, moving forward at this meeting, we acknowledge the internal audit report, and Counselor Clark, supported by other members, agreed that this will now become a regular meeting check. Is that the right words?
Yeah, I'll check this, yeah, because I think if, if this is retrospective, we have to say that we probably haven't responded.
Yeah.
But, but what we want to do is to say what we're going to do different, what's going to be different.
So that would be the sheet of paper, saying what we've agreed tonight, is that we will be bringing that to council.
So that next year, when we fill this in, we can say yes to that.
We can merrily take, um, two minutes over this.
No, 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 assumptions here, it will be the day.
It's the hope, it's the hope. So we're all in, in agreement then that no is the appropriate answer, that with the caveat that we will, we will explain that as we are in place effective strategies.
Yeah, we agree. And you could put the minute number for that, which, because they will look at that, ooh, lovely. That's what audits are like.
Lovely, so, uh, number eight on this chart, we considered whether any litigation...
Sorry, you have to...
Uh, yeah, can you just clarify that, because I was a little bit confused at the end.
Point seven is a no, so we accepted it as a no, but we...
We have plans for next year to make sure it's in place.
I have to go back in.
Yeah, he was looking back to this, also about responded to.
Yes.
So that, um, we...
Splendid. So we considered whether any litigation liabilities, commitments, events or transactions occurring either during or after the year end, having a financial impact on this authority, and where appropriate, have included them in the accounting statements. What this means as a council, we have disclosed everything it should have about its business activity during the year, including events taking place after the year end, if...
I believe so.
Obviously, we've been pretty transparent, haven't we?
Yeah.
Are we, are we in agreement there?
Yes.
Yeah.
If not, so long approaching.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. Wait, are we local council? Have we nev, did we come under nine?
I don't think so.
Yes, well, local council.
No, um, no, because that's trots on some...
No, no, because we don't have that.
We don't have that.
No, because we, we have no interest in trust at such a level. So that's a, not, we didn't say number two is all that thing, yeah.
Yes, we have our box to tick for that.
So back to the business of point eight, are we happy that we have disclosed everything about the business activity for the year past, and any other matters arising after year end?
I think I'm happy.
Happy, happy for yes?
Yeah.
Happy for you to sign that on behalf?
Lovely, okay, that's a yes from all involved, I think that. Marvelous, we have reached, oh, that everyone, that was a bit cheering, that we should go over that. Lovely, so I've made a note of exactly that, I will transpose that immediately on to the ADAR report for data, if you're all happy with that, and sign it.
Who's going to sign it, the clerk?
You are in favour, it's, and I'm in the opinion.
Yes, in her absence, it would be Cathy as the Secretary of Clarks. Right. Marvelous, welcome everyone, so, um...
Have we done page five?
Uh, page, oh, thank you very much.
Perhaps require a signature in it as well.
Lovely, so, there is an element of this that was restated.
We, we have the, if you pointed out the amended figures, yes.
Fantastic.
But I, I, as you know, at the beginning of the meeting, I just had one question, because obviously you're going to sign it on behalf of us, we, we haven't seen, that, well, I haven't seen the, the bank reconciliation for the 31st of March, to see whether those figures agree.
I'm, uh...
So I would be happy to approve it on my side, on, on the proviso, that you, you, before you sign it, would just say yes, you've seen that.
Reconciliation.
And it matches.
Yeah, I'm happy with that then.
But have you seen it?
Um, presently, I've seen this document all familiarised myself.
Okay, so I don't know how that works out for approving it, if you haven't seen it.
Well, before you sign it, you will have...
Are we, are we happy to approve that upon...
You provided your, come, provided you've seen the reconciliation.
Is it easy for you to get hold of it? Because I think because it's minuted, it would be important that it didn't look odd.
Very well.
Is it, is it easy for you just to get it, to just say, well, yes, I've seen it and the figure matched, and then we can just vote and agree for you to...
No is the answer. Uh, unless it's tonight, it's, um, I will have to get one of the office members to bring that for me.
I don't know how we word it.
Uh, in fairness, I'm...
Because we need it for tonight, to get it in, because that's the purpose of the meeting.
It is, yes.
Can we do a proviso approval?
That's what I was...
Yeah, I'm happy to go over that if we've been reached.
If it doesn't match, then you have to probably report back to us and find out why or something, I don't know what's the answer.
If you, I mean, this, so these are figures that we are validating as per the internal audit. So if you flick to this page in your...
Yeah, I've seen that, but that's why I was saying, has he seen, there's no evidence that he's seen...
He's seen some, and, and, and prepared.
But he, he doesn't say that that's been checked against it, does he? He just gives them as figures.
Very well, so you prefer that I reconcile the audit report with our reconciled bank account?
Yeah, maybe just so then we know that, because it seems to be in, I've got my reading glasses back on, but it, it's a bold thing, so to me, that's important, admit to agree with the bank reconciliation. If it weren't in bold, it probably wouldn't jump out as important.
Very well, so are you happy that on the proviso, that that all does add up, and that you're happy for me to sign retrospectively, or, or sign to agree, having viewed this? So you're essentially giving permission as a former council, who is assigned...
As chairman to check it, because you wouldn't want to sign it if they come back the audit report and they say, this doesn't match again, that's what happened last year.
Correct.
Because everyone will go, look at the chairman, he signed that.
I'd be, I'm keen to avoid such a thing.
Yeah.
Will everyone be...
So that's yes.
Yep, so I propose, I propose that the council allow me to check and sign accordingly, should I find that all in order?
Yeah.
Marvelous, that is unanimous.
Well done, Ron. Oh, God, I have better than that.
Yeah, can we have a, can we have a second, I've got that for, sorry, thoughts. Oh, Councilwoman, this first one, we're on there. Thank you everyone so much for bearing with me. The next meeting, uh, is pencilled in for, uh, scheduled for November...